We will entertain motions.
I got something here. Okay. Oh, no, this is the finance.
The finance committee here. Here comes Tricia with our.
She's coming, she's coming. All right. Oh, let's see. I should have this memorized by now. Okay, I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussions regarding proposed pending or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Any debates, conversation, questions, discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All in favor of the motion passes unanimously. We will be headed into executive session and we will return as close to seven P M. As we can. Thank you all very much. We're returning from executive session. We will continue on with our agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we will continue onward and that is the receiving and hearing of delegates, public comment period. And I believe we have two people signed up. Dr. Tripp?
The first is Courtney Reinhardt and this is, she'll be joining us virtually.
About to start singing you all just to give you something to do.
You know any show tunes, Dr. Redd?
I do. None, actually. Should we?
Hi, my audio cut out for a little bit. My apologies.
We can hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. My name's Courtney Reinhardt. I have kids at South Hill and at Boynton Middle School. The P, I'm here as a representative of the P T A Council. The P T A Council meets once a month as representatives from various P T A organizations across the district, with members of the district administration, educators, and other stakeholders in the system to discuss topics of interest throughout our schools. Our meetings typically include representatives from the majority of our schools and our participants often share their personal stories of their students in their classrooms and in their school buildings. We also share out information across the district in support of the communications team at the district. During our last few meetings, we've met with Dr. Brown, Deputy Superintendent Mary Grover, Jennifer Gondak, and the I C S D Communications Team. Today, we discussed with I T A President Catherine Cenares, various topics ranging from cellphone and technology use to the upcoming I T A and school district negotiations. We were excited to hear that the forthcoming negotiation process will be livestreamed and recorded to allow the public to witness the discussions which have such an impact on our budget and on our children. Next month, we're excited to welcome Board Member Emily Workman to speak with the Council about the Board of Education budget writing process. The P T A Council supports the work of all of our teachers, staff, and administrators by sharing information and resources throughout the district for the benefit of students. We look forward to learning more about the proposed budget and encouraging our members to vote in support of passing that budget. Any schools' P T A may join us or send a representative to our next meeting on March eleventh. We will meet in person with a virtual option at the school district office and we would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Courtney. Appreciate it.
Next up, Scott Jankey.
Hello, everyone. My name is Scott Jankey and I want to take a moment to address a critical issue affecting not just my family, but many others in our district, a communication, or rather, sometimes the lack of it. Recently, my daughter's bus broke down at her school. After waiting for thirty minutes with no update, I called the Transportation Department only to learn that the bus had a mechanical issue while still parked at the school. There was no communication from either the Transportation Department or the school. As a parent not knowing where your child is or what is happening is both frustrating, worrisome, and scary. This also wasn't the first incident. Earlier in the school year, in October, November, a different bus delay lasted for over forty-five minutes. After raising my concerns with the Transportation Department and having a conversation with them as well, I was assured that caregivers would receive timely updates in the future. However, that promise was not kept. Additionally, our transportation requests submitted at the start of the year remained unresolved also until I escalated the issue. The communication failures extend beyond transportation. Earlier this year, a German teacher resigned from the middle school. Despite the class being an introductory course, there was no communication from the school about how the lost instructional time would be addressed. It wasn't until I reached out that any explanation was provided to us. These repeated failures highlighted a deeper issue, accountability. Who is responsible when communications break down? Who ensures that commitments made to parents are followed through? Right now, there seems to be no clear answer. Promises of improved communication have been made and broken with no consequence. And if there's no accountability for these ongoing issues, how can we expect real change? When parents raise, when parents raise concerns, we expect at least an acknowledgement, if not a solution. Yet after my most recent email on January thirty-first regarding these bus delays, as well as a follow-up earlier this week, I've received no response from the Transportation Director or the District Administrator overseeing transportation, or any guidance on accessing the G P S system reportedly that's been installed on our buses. This is unacceptable. If parents cannot get timely answers to direct questions, how can we trust that critical issues such as student safety, curriculum changes, resource allocation are being communicated effectively? This is not just about one bus route, but it's about a pattern of pure, poor communication and lack of accountability that leaves families, families in the dark. Our district should be a partner in our children's education and communication is the foundation of that partnership. Parents deserve transparency, accountability, and responsiveness when those entrusted with our, with, when, when entrusted with our children's well-being. Our children deserve better and so do we. Thank you.
Board responses.
I think we're all dismayed to hear of your experience. I certainly was unaware that the system wasn't working that, to that extent, that you wouldn't know. That your student wouldn't be expected home or wouldn't be picked up until much later. I, I think we can all understand a five or ten-minute delay or lack of following a schedule given all the, all the data, all the, you know, variables that go into running a bus route. But it is troubling to hear that you didn't get any kind of, you know, notification of that. And we can certainly ask Mr. Van Kuren to look into that and provide us more information at our next meeting. All I can say is I think we're doing a lot better than we used to, but I think we're far from perfect and it is helpful to hear specifics about our failures so that we know where the failures are and how to address them. Beyond that, I'll just say I'm sorry and we'll hope to do better.
And thank you for sharing that and about your, the transportation communication. And thank you for you reaching out too. And I would just like to encourage you as well as our community that we do have a communication protocol when it's initiated by a parent, a caregiver, and it doesn't stop right there at the head of transportation, but also to reach out to the superintendent because that's in the communication protocol that we should reach out to the superintendent. And if you didn't hear from the superintendent, to bring it to the attention of the Board of Education. And I always want to encourage our community of what's on our website and the communication protocol is there and knowing that our administrative staff is down personnel too to make sure that, to give time to, to, for responses. In your situation, that it has been a long time. So we do acknowledge that. And, and thank you, Courtney, for just giving us an update on P T A Council. I was involved in P T A Council and just thanking you for your continued work, work and the work of all those in our P Ts across the district.
Hearing no other board response, I also want to say thank you to the P T A and for the work that's being done. Greatly appreciate it. And we will then move to student reps and I am not sure who went first last time, so. Rock, paper, scissors.
Okay, hello. Hi, everybody. Good to see you again. Um, so we have several I H S students that have sent very, very impressive new records in indoor track, pole vaulting, and weight throw. Another student was named the New York State Sophomore of the Year for her cross-country performances fall. Two other students, two other I H S students were awarded as first-team all-state cross-country runners. Some highlights from other winter sports include the boys' J V basketball team. They are dominating the season, sitting at a record of fifteen to zero. The boys' varsity basketball team and the boys' swim varsity, both have their senior nights tonight at I H S. Also, an update, we are still waiting for reusable plates to be used in our cafeteria again, which also includes silverware.
We had Winter Formal last Friday night on December seventh and juniors and seniors from I H S and L A C S came together for some fun dancing and photo-taking. I H S Science Olympia traveled to Yale University last Saturday and competed among sixty schools all across the East Coast. They placed third overall and were named on the podium among other very well-known schools. And the team was recently crowned regional champions and will be competing in the state championships next month. And Code Red also held their ninth annual open house this Saturday with guided tours of their, our new Taylor Tech, Trailer Tech rooms and activities by Cornell Project Teams, Community STEM Groups, and other I H S STEM Clubs. They also hosted the Vex robotic scrimmage and after a very long build season, the robot that they're making is mechanically finished and they're currently working on testing and programming to compete in Rochester and Albany next month.
Hi, everybody. Great to see you tonight. So following up on something that I talked about last meeting, which was the instructional video for eighth graders scheduling, we're still making progress on that. I actually have a meeting tomorrow down at Boynton after school and we think that we can get it ready and up and running before the end of the school year, ideally late spring. And we'll pass it, of course, through the counselors to make sure first that they're all go with that. But we're hoping it can be a reusable resource for students over the summer when contact with people in school is usually a little more difficult, especially for eighth graders who don't know the system quite yet. We've had recent conversations with Principal Miss Hardisty about standards-based grading. We hope to continue those conversations. And we had a question for the board that may be a little bit sensitive. So we understand if you can't provide or don't have the information to provide us with a response. But this had to do with if you have any knowledge of how the current administration and the funding for the Department of Education would or would not trickle down to state-level funding, which could trickle down to local-level funding and affect district functions at the I C S D.
Thank you, Ithaca High School.
Great, thank you. So tomorrow, we are doing trips rotations, which is when all of the spring trips set up a little information session, I guess. Each student picks three to try and they sort of cycle through looking at which ones might interest them. We've got some really great options this year, so I'll bring up, I'll highlight a couple examples. Canoe and bike trip are trip staples. They've been happening for years and years. There are local trips like hiking and exploring Ithaca. And there are away trips like the cultural identity trip, which is hoping to go to Puerto Rico, and Hurricane Helene relief trip for many, many years, until last year, actually. L A C S did a Katrina relief trip. Finally, it came time to get a new hurricane. This trip came into being through student effort headed by a senior this year. It's very exciting.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I talked about the mission statement conversations we've been having at A C S. That has continued for the past two weeks and actually tomorrow at A S M, it's going to the full school to really just continue this conversation. So the mission, the current mission statement we have was adopted in nineteen ninety-four, so it's thirty-one years old now. And that statement is our mission is to educate students to be global citizens in the twenty-first century. Well, this is twenty-first century, so you know, it's time for a revamp. So a group of students, including myself, have proposed a mission statement that reads empowering students and student voice, inclusive community, self-directed learning, and environmentally sustainable practices through active democratic engagement. Then that is the current proposed mission statement. We will get recommendations on that mission statement tomorrow and then it will go to a full vote for the school and then with any luck, it'll be adopted. In other news, last Tuesday, we held an E A S M, or Emergency All-School Meeting, at A C S surrounding the Presidents of ICE in Ithaca. Many students were alarmed and it was just meant to calm them down. We held a virtual panel discussion with our principal, Depp Attac, I C S D Admin Officer, Dan Bryman, Mary Jo Dudley, who is the Director of the Cornell University Farm Worker Program, and Thomas Hobel, who is a local filmmaker and released a film, I believe, a few years ago on immigration system and the immigration stories, especially in local, the local community. And the point of this A S M was really just to make everyone aware of the facts regarding the case in Ithaca and then, you know, shared constitutional rights and then to answer questions. So, yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you, L A C S. I'm gonna do something I don't normally do, which is to speak first in terms of board responses and then give it to my colleagues. The film that you're referring to by Tom Hubbell, Are We There Yet? Will actually be screened at Ithaca College in a week and so I'll encourage folks to take a look at that film. It was released, I want to say a year and a half ago, but folks that may be interested. This is awkward, but in a moment of self-promotion, I'll be doing a teach-in at Ithaca College called Federal Impact on Local Education, where I'll be more than happy to answer a number of Caidman's questions. With that being said, I think what we're experiencing with the rise of number of executive orders is at this point in time, words on a page and not translated necessarily into policy and/or action. And so the board is following these executive orders carefully, working with our legal team to see if they actually have any legal standing or legal merit. We know a number of them have already been suspended or there's been an injunction or, and so we are trying carefully not to, for lack of a better word, and I realize now I'm seeing press here, but I'm gonna say it anyway, not to overreact when we see an executive order, but to actually identify what's being said and what's taking place. What I will say and I'm, Dr. Brown may say something later on, we are absolutely one hundred percent committed to making sure that every child has their constitutional right to an education. And that's how we're gonna approach it and that's what we're gonna do moving forward. Mention about being the twenty-first century in the L A C S mission statement. It was literally last century when I ran the bike group to Canada and back. And I don't think that I can do that anymore, but I'm looking forward to the trips that folks are doing. I know L A C, L A C S trips are one of the more amazing institutions that the school engages in. And so I wish folks a good deal of success moving that forward. And so with my breaking protocols, I normally do, I apologize, additional board responses.
Oh, I, I wanted a question for Caidman about the eighth grade scheduling video is where will that go up? Which website?
So we have to iron out some of those details with the specific middle school administration, which we're hoping to do once we actually have the video. We are still trying to make sure that everyone's okay with what's gonna be in it because we don't want to run into the issue of making a video too fast and then finding out that one counselor found it to not be, you know, what, what they wanted expressed to their middle schoolers and then we have an issue and we have to go back to the drawing board. So hopefully my meeting with the counselors at Boynton tomorrow will give me some more insight into the method by which we could disperse it. But my thinking would be that sometime late in the year, when I know that at the middle schools, there's occasionally a couple of days there where there's not as much to do since education has largely ceased. They could, you know, it wouldn't be a very long video, maybe five minutes. They could show it to every, I don't know, English class. I'm just spitballing here, right? And then we could also send out an email form and one of the big things I wanted to focus on was getting it to parents also because, you know, I think it's great if kids see it, but a lot of kids might not take the initiative to, you know, understand it and act on it, but, and maybe, maybe they shouldn't be expected to. But parents are often heavily involved in that aspect of their child's education. So I think they should have a right to have access to that. So we'll try to find some listserv to send it through. Sorry, that's kind of a long response, but those are my jumbled thoughts.
Thank you. And I'd also like to recommend on the high school, like their playbook and their connect with their P T A and all, so.
Additional board responses. Fantastic. As always, thank you greatly to our student reps. Thank you for the work that you do in the preparation for these reports. They're always greatly appreciated and very informative. That we'll move on to our agenda, which is the consent agenda and we'll entertain motions.
Okay. I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in consent agenda. Consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Questions, concerns, debate? Fantastic. I will add a folks notice on the consent agenda, a number of donations from the Ithaca Public Education Initiative that support the Kids Discover Trail, another phenomenal program in our community that we know would not happen without the great generosity of that organization. So we're very thankful that our community and our young people get a chance to experience the variety of field trips that they ever go on. So thank you greatly for that. And with that being said, we'll call the question. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll continue on with our agenda and that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Brown?
Hey, thank you for the opportunity, Professor Bradwell. I have quite a few items and first and most importantly, and importantly, thank you for your approval of the ratification. Or we have a contract with our Ithaca Principals and Directors Association. And shout out to the leadership of that association and their support and it was, I hope it was, was to come. We're gonna have another successful negotiation with the I T A, but we had a great conversation with our P D A and you have a contract for the next two years with them and that's of note. So thank you so much for approving that this evening. Also, it's always good to hear from my high school students to hear about the joy and the brilliance and excellence that's happening in your buildings. If I may, I would love to elevate the joy and brilliance in our middle schools right now. The math council team, I think they call themselves Math, Math, Math-A-Leach. They swept the award that this most recent math council, yeah, performance, I think that was in Downstate somewhere. So they were, I think, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth place finishers on our team. And that, if you, if you can look, I think we'll have a news story out there, but to be a part of our math council team is pretty important. And to have our folks sweep the awards is pretty impressive over the weekend. And in addition, and you know, at Boynton, I hope folks had an opportunity to go out, see, go see How to Survive a Shakespeare Play. And I think the house was packed on both evenings. So a shout out to the folks at Boynton. Wow, How to Survive a Shakespeare. I, I wish there was a How to Survive a Kendrick Lamar concert at halftime too for folks. As I was joking with my team, really, because a lot of folks need that right now too. But anyway, shout out to the Boynton folks for an outstanding job with their performances. Communication, if I may, because Karen, thank you. You reminded me to speak more about our communication protocol, which is noted on our website. And you quickly went to the superintendent being there, but I would like to highlight and underscore for folks there are many other levels prior to calling the superintendent. And I would also remind folks, if wishing to say something about an organization, whether it's an organization of five employees or fifty thousand employees, communication is something that you will always be able to speak to because it's something that every organization is working to continuously improve. And if you find a, an organization that's doing communication perfectly, let me know because I think they would be steady. Because I think oftentimes we get caught up in perfect communication in an era where communication demands are ever more present or evolving. So this would ask folks to provide constructive feedback and thoughts on how to be better and more timely. As I think about the board's investment in communications here and the metrics in which we track, everything from website clicks to news stories to the ways in which we engage with families, how those metrics have significantly enhanced and improved over years. And I'm also thinking about how folks want more. And as I'm thinking about just some of the things we heard this evening around transportation, I'm thinking about the Transportation Department. I'm thinking about Chris Sportsman and about the three people who are running a transportation department. That's the largest one in central New York, sixty-four routes and about eighty-five employees in a little building. It's about the size of this room right now. And thinking about being down there when the phone is ringing and you can barely get through because the phones ringing so often for folks wanting to know, particularly on a day when it's snowing. Folks trying to get through. And I'm thinking about, yeah, when we have breakdowns, because with that many buses running at any given point, you can ask folks at TCAT this. There are gonna be some mechanical issues. And by the time a driver assesses their mechanical issue and what may have happened or is not happening with that bus, make sure the young people on that bus are safe and okay. Then to contact the folks in the office to say, yo, we're gonna be here for a while. And then the radio down to the Transportation Department to get a bus on the way back up there or to get up there to replace the one or get kids transferred. We're about thirty minutes in already before we can even begin to take the fifteen minutes to send out a text message to all families. So if folks are wondering where their baby is, which I would be too, if, if there's a thirty-minute or a forty-five-minute delay, you can call, use the transportation protocol. Most of our families have a phone number, a mobile number or text. They can text the principal. I'm thinking about Ms. Granger, Ms. Humboldt, these administrators who give their phone numbers to people to text or call if you have a question, particularly about where your child is. Those are things you can access in that thirty or forty-five minute range or call the Transportation Department. A lot of things you can do as part of, that are consistent with the communication protocol in lieu of waiting to talk to the superintendent or the board. So communication, we want the constructive feedback, but I will ask for folks' grace and your patience as we try to get to perfection, knowing that we may never get there, but recognizing we're doing, we're doing the best we can. And then I will speak, we are getting a communication that we receive, I have, and I'm sure the board has as well. A lot of emails from community members, calls from community members, conversations in Wegman about responses or statements in response to federal executive orders. And I know we spoke about it a little bit, but if I could add a bit. I remember a conversation two years ago onstage, I talked about the academic journey versus the authentic one. And when on an academic journey in places like ours, we do a lot of statements. I'm coming from a town where we did a lot of statements. I, I helped a lot of folks in my former town write statements about statues and the presence of statues in places in our community. And after years of writing statements about those statues, they finally came down. And my daddy who lived there, who's lived there eighty, eighty-four years, he said, those statues came down, nothing changed around here. So I, I believe in statue, in statements and I recognize the need for them at times, but please know that the authentic work, which is about the instructional design, the pedagogy, the policy shifts, the work that you do every single day to change culture and change the experience and create a sense of belonging, that's the most important work. And so as folks are writing to me asking for a statement, I remind them about the authentic work that's everywhere, including our website. If you want to know how, what is our response to executive orders that are asking us not to see the humanity of the young people we serve, you can look on our website around the, and, and find the anti-marginalization curriculum that speaks to how we will validate and affirm your preferred pronouns. If you have questions about the ways in which we select texts to put in front of young people, I would ask you to look at our website, look at these New York State standards, look at the New York State Costly Responsible Sustainability Framework, and look at how we have on the covers of our texts, more and more images of people of color and from different backgrounds than animals. See, there's many ways in which we are validating, affirming, and centering the experience of our young people that is lawful because we are following the law. It's compliant and it's consistent with the state standards and the frameworks that we have committed to doing in this great organization in New York State. So I hope our actions speak much louder than any statement. And there will be a time for a statement, but please know we're focused on and spending most of our time on the work. And if you see us not doing something that validates and affirms the humanity and experience of every young person we serve, let us know. And we will respond in a statement when it's necessary. Thank you, Professor, for the opportunity. Cheers.
I appreciate that, Dr. Brown. And I will follow up to the folks who have been emailing us, you will get a response. This is the first time the board has had a meet in two weeks. And so it would not be wise for any board member to respond without us having some time to share space together to determine what our path forward is. And so for anyone who has emailed, please know a response will be coming your way shortly. Let's continue on with our agenda if we can. We have the privilege of having TST Bosse's presentation and welcoming back a longtime community hero, Lily Talkitt. And I'm sure, Tim Parsons, my apologies. That's what I said. Please come join us. My apologies for messing up the name.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. Good to see you all again. Thank you so much for having us. For those who don't know me, I'm Lily Talkitt. I get to serve as the district superintendent for Tompkins Seneca Taoga Bosse's. And with me is someone with a wonderful heart and who has been doing this work for many years, a fabulous colleague as well. Let him introduce himself.
I am Dave Parsons, Assistant Superintendent for the Administrative Services at TST Bosse's.
And tonight, we're going to get to talk a lot about Bosse's numbers. Feel free to interrupt us, ask us questions that you may have. Because although this is really focused on a budget report, we do a ton of programming up at Bosse's to support young people and to support our broader community. And we'd love to talk more about it if you have any questions. Oh, thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. All right. Perfect. All right, so you're going to see a great number of numbers that I'm happy to explain that are throughout this slide. So R-WADA, raise your hand if you're familiar with R-WADA. This is a real fun New York State term. Lovely. I see some people in the audience. Thank you. All right. So this is Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. And so New York State, the New York State Education Department determines this for every single school district. And it's based on Resident Weighted Average Daily Attendance. So there's a combination of wealth ratio, et cetera, in the number of students who attend. Then you'll see that next number down, that 43.08%. That's the amount that Ithaca represents in all of the Tompkins Seneca Taoga Bosse's region. Right? So we have about 10,877 students. Ithaca represents about 43% of that. And then that next number down, that 43.5%, that's how much money Ithaca receives back on every dollar that you spend here through, through Bosse's for anything that's aidable. A couple of other highlights here. A great number of students who attend career and technical education or what's, what you see up there that says CTE. That's everything from culinary to welding to heavy equipment. I mean, you'll see the current three-year average is quite a bit lower than that. So there's been some adjustments in terms of the number of students who are attending from Ithaca. And that projected three-year average you see will be increasing. In alternative education and special education, you'll see not fully whole numbers. And those have to do with services that Bosse's provides to students who are Ithaca students in relationship to special education services that can really run the gamut in addition to alternative education. Yeah, Caidman, good to see you. Sorry about the bills this season.
Please, no.
I'm a hardcore fan, man. You know that.
I'm going to pretend I didn't just hear that. So can you, sorry, could you describe the difference in special education and alternative education?
Yes, great question. So special education. So there's a federal law called IDEA, IDEA. So that's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. There are 13 categories of disability that are within that. And in New York State, there are students who receive special education services through Bosse's, not always through Bosse's, it could be through district as well. But we provide programming for those students who have disabilities as per those categories. Some of those are on our campus, some of those are in other places. Or maybe we provide itinerant services and things like that. And then alternative education, so we have a regional alternative school. And it's a high school that's a smaller environment. Again, it's on the campus, that's right across from Duitt Middle School, that provides much smaller class sizes, but provides still a high school education. Does that help? Cool. And then PTAC is another program that provides a number of pathways for young people in, in technical careers. And it's located at TC3 and kids take TC3 classes. And many come out with an associate's. The current contract amount for Ithaca is about $22.2 million every year. So that's how much Ithaca spends at Bosse's. And overall, sometimes you will see the percentage of Bosse's services and that total percent of, of R-WADA, that second number, you might see those to be exactly the same, especially if we're talking about a smaller school district. But for a larger school district like Ithaca, you're able to provide a lot of, a wide range of programming for young people. So you might not see those precisely reflect one another. Right? Any questions about this slide? Cool. All right, we're going to keep going. All right, so this is the program budget. These are all based on initial service requests. So this process happens, you may have heard somewhat about this. You will see this is from all nine component districts. And these are all of the requests that you'll see. So career and tech education, you'll see there's some increases. Why is that up 6.67%? That's because more students are joining career and tech education. Also, things like supplies have gone up, materials, they're just more expensive. And we have contractual obligations with our teachers. Similarly, with exceptional education, those are really with the teacher contract. Itinerants, that's the third one there, that tends to fluctuate. It really depends on students' individualized education plans or IEPs. So what Caidman and I were talking about earlier, young people with disabilities. And sometimes those are, those are also for things like you'll see up there, Spanish or English as a new language, et cetera. And then instructional services has stayed about the same. Instructional support has gone down and non-instructional support has gone up. We may see some of these things change. These are initial service requests, so we build the budget. And then oftentimes what we will see from school districts is we'll see coarser increased requests. And then our job is to be super nimble and try to, and try to meet the needs of the young people and the educators sometimes throughout the year. You'll also see some decreases in cross contracts. Those are for services or things that are specifically offered by other Bosse's. We don't pretend to be experts and be able to do absolutely everything. And there are some Bosse's that specialize in, say, instructional technology, contracts, et cetera, and they vet all of those. So you'll see the, those are, those are the Bosse's that, that sort of take that work on. Questions here? All right. Our total budgetary change over our entire organization, you're going to see 1.97% change, increase. So that's a decrease in instructional support, decrease in cross contracts, increase in exceptional education, and an increase in career and tech. Any questions about that? I'm going to turn it over to Dave, who's going to get to talk about the admin budget and more.
Thank you. Sorry, we tried to fix it. So this one's a tough one to read. It shouldn't look like that. But as we know, being in the service business, people business, our visit, biggest expense, our salary infringes because we are in that people business. But if you see like the increase for salaries, those are contractual. Our increase for next year for our budgets for salaries is about a 4.79. And if you look, remember back in the exceptional ed, that was about that same thing. So contractual was driving that. Our health insurance for next year, I've budgeted for 8.24%. Our increase for the health insurance plus any retirees. So as, as folks that retired, that are entitled to have insurance in retirement, I have to budget for that. So that's what drives that number. Retirement for let, for next year, actually the TRS is down a little bit for next year. So that's certainly helping our budgets to drive, drive some of those costs. The other benefits that you'll see, you'll see actually a decrease of a 0.45. And one of the biggest drivers of that is our unemployment or workers' comp insurance. We're in the workers' comp co-op, Ithaca's in that one. And because we've had some pretty good years and we've got the money to do it, we're now able to hold back on our rates. So we actually had a negative rate increase for next, for this year and for next. So that's certainly helping our budgets in the, in that process. Any questions?
Yeah, Dave, thank you very much. My apologies.
I've been called worse.
How, how is the, you know, an 8.24% increase in health insurance is significant in an organization? How has that been tracking over, you know, previous years or what projection is for future years?
So our co-op, we're looking at a six and a half to 7% increase in, in the rates. But like I said, I also have the increase, and you'll see in the next couple of slides, for retirees. But that's just what, what the rates are. Some of it's driven by the rates, some of it's driven by people that used to have single policies or no. And then because their insurance or their contracts say they can have it. So I always have to look at where are we with that? And are we going to have enough for next year? So it's not an exact science because it's not driven specifically on the rate increase.
Thank you.
So our capital budget is actually made up of two different sections. One is the rent that we pay. So we do rent some space for our educational services. We actually rent space next door in the IC3. So our young adults for the early child program, they're actually embedded in that program over there and we rent a space from them. The rest of the rent that's in there is actually for our adult ed program. There's about, about 100,000 in there for our adult ed programs. I have to budget it in this one, but you actually won't be paying for it. Because when that bill comes, the adult ed reimburses this budget and we pay it out. But by statute, I have to budget it in this one. And the other part of that is about 300,000 that we put in this capital budget for ongoing projects rather than to wait until we've got a big project. We're trying to do the smaller ones as they come, like windows and things that we can do on a, on a smaller scale rather than wait until we've got a big one to do. Our reserve accounts, actually on the next slide, you'll see what reserve accounts we can have. But Bosse's actually cannot have an unappropriated fund balance. So what, the way it works for Bosse's is when we, we bill all the districts for the services and at the end of the year, we figure out what are, were all of our expenses. And anything that's left over, we send back in a refund. Those come back to the districts in November of the, of the year after. So we close our books June 30, do all the calculations, make sure all the bills are paid, everything that needs to get done. And then we do refunds to the districts in November of the following year. So we have no unappropriated fund balance that we can use to try to help the budget the following year. The reserves that we can have, and these are the audited numbers from last June 30. Because we are self-funded for the unemployment, we have a reserve for that. The flex and, and insurance one, what that is, is when, when employees or retirees, and keeping in mind that this is as of June 30 of last spring. Retirees, quite often when they're paying their insurance, they'll give us their check for the whole year. So that goes in this. It's actually not a reserve, but it has to go somewheres. So that it gets stuffed in this one. The other one that's in here is the flex spending. So anybody that signs up for flex spending, that our flex spending year runs from September through August. So whatever money is setting there in the end of June, that's where it has to be. So that actually is more of a liability than it is a reserve, but that's where they tell us it has to be. So the CTE reserve, actually when I started at Bosse's, we had nothing in this one. We had the reserve started, but we didn't fund it. And the way that one is funded is we use the depreciation of the equipment that we buy. So we're always, what we're always trying to do is make our budgets as smooth as possible to get away from the spikes. It's a, it's a killer to the districts in the, in the business office, and you don't want them to look like me, to try to figure out what do we do about spikes. So we're always trying to make our budgets as smooth and level as possible. So with the CTE reserve, what we do is we buy a piece of equipment depreciated over 10 years, which is, it's called depreciation, but we use that money that is technically being depreciated and put it in a reserve. So the next time we need to buy a piece of equipment that's expensive, we don't just put it in the budget, we can take it out of the reserve. And then we refund that again over a level 10-year funding process. Our ERS and TRS reserves, again, they were not very much when I got here. Actually, TRS didn't exist. That actually was only created in the last five or six years. So we're trying to fund those when we can. So when times are good, we're putting money in those. When times go bad, we'll take it out. Again, we're trying to keep our budgets as level as possible to our districts. Any questions with that one? Because that's our, that's the reserves that we can have. So the administrative budget is the one that you folks as board members and all of your colleagues in the other eight districts get a, get a chance to vote on. You will, you folks vote on it just like your taxpayers vote on your budget for your district, for your, for your budget here. So we spend a little bit of time with this one. And the salary infringe, you can see that's certainly gone up. We've got contractuals in there. The rest of them are pretty steady. The, the two that always stick out in this, this budget are the, the RAN interest. We do borrow our budget every year. And thank you for a couple of years ago allowing us to, to continue to do that. And hopefully that produced a lot of RAN or interest money. We, we brought about 500,000 into the Bosse's that we give back to you in refunds in the following year because we're doing that. And I know the districts take that money that they don't pay Bosse's until May and invest it and make interest on it. So that's a way to get revenue without having to go to the taxpayer. So we certainly thank you for, for continuing that process. The retiree benefits, anyone that retires from TST Bosse's that is entitled to have insurance in retirement, by statute, has to be in the administrative budget. So whether they retire from CTE or maintenance, or I don't care where they retire from, that expense has to by statute be in the administrative budget. So that's always a big one that sticks out. We will, I will have to say that some of the things that we've put into place in our contracts has, has started to make that not be so steep. It's started to level off. Some things that we've done in our contracts to help, help alleviate those, that growth. You'll notice that it's not a very big change this year. And probably in the previous years, you've seen some substantial change there. Every year or two or three, I look at this and say, do I really need that much anymore? If, you know, folks If, you know, folks no longer need the insurance, and I hate to say it any other way, but there comes a point that people don't need it. And at that point, I can, I can adjust that and not increase it quite so much. So given all of that, we're looking at about a 1.95% increase in that budget. That's, I think the, if not the lowest, close to the lowest I've done since I've been here. And this is my 17th time doing this. The interest, like I said, five minutes ago, we made about 500, but I don't budget that much because my crystal ball is broke. And I don't know what it's going to be for next year. So I'm always going to budget for the worst case scenario and hope for the best. So I actually only budget around 200,000 in that one. Another 3,000 in miscellaneous revenues. So if you take what we've looked for, for rates for next year for the budget itself, subtract out the revenue that I can pretty much plan on, we're looking at about a 2.01% increase in this particular budget. But like I said, this is the one that you folks get to vote on. So any questions, by all means, ask so that you're not wondering what, what's up with this one. All set? So sometime between April 16th and April 30th, you folks will vote, just like your counterparts in all of the other districts. You'll vote on two things. One is the administrative budget that we just went over and representatives for the TST BOCs board from Candor, Dryden, and George Jr. So tho, those will be out for you to vote on, on the 23rd of April. Any questions? Well, we certainly do appreciate you folks allowing us to come in and take some time out of your board meeting for TST BOCs. And we appreciate everything you do for all of our kids. Thank you.
Before, just to make sure, any questions, board members? We would probably be voting on this on April 29th, which is just under the wire, but that's our next scheduled meeting in between our breaks and everything else. But this is the opportunity to ask folks. If we could do it earlier, we will. This is the time for any board members to ask any questions. And dare I say, it's also an opportunity to ask any questions, learn more about the amazing programs that BOCs supports ICSD students.
Well, I had to go back to last year's presentation to do the comparison. And it looks like the expenses increased by like 6.85% from the year before to last year. And now it's just slightly over 1% this year. So that looks good.
Some of that, some of what's driven that is the.
The TRS rates not going up. Actually, they're, they leveled a little bit. TRS is, their rates are based on a five-year rolling average. So when the, when the stock market is doing well, then the rate that we all have to pay into the TRS levels off and, and goes down. So, but the nice thing about TRS is on a five-year rolling average to get away from those spikes. ERS is not. So I anticipate if the stock market does a little bit better again next year, we may see a reduction in our ERS rates. But they drop like that much from last year. Not, not a significant amount, but TRS did drop enough to, to see an effect in our budgets.
Dr. Brown?
Just a quick statement. Thank y'all for such a clear and concise presentation. I've sat through quite a few of these and your year-to-year increase is welcome as we're putting together our budgets right now. So thank you. And also thank you to Mr. Granger. Brad, you put in hundreds of hours of work on that board and in that community. And I see what you do. I just see you in general. After spending closer to two decades down here, you then volunteer down to do that work. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to try to word this correctly because a lot of people ask me how the funding of students works. You know, Ithaca has a budget, we pay BOCs for students. So is each student a different cost pending needs? Like, how does that actually work out when you do a breakdown of what ICSD is paying?
I think I understand your question. Can I try? I'll try to reflect it back. So are you asking about how each program slot is essentially generated?
I guess so, right? Like we, and like if you go back to the slides and you look at like the 43% that Ithaca is part of your budget, right? Was I, do you remember that number correctly? Forty-three something?
Of the total ARWADA, but it's only about 35 and change of the total budget. So Ithaca accesses 35% of our total budget.
Okay.
Across the nine components.
And so based on, okay, I guess that's, and so based on student need, right? So if we're sending a student over there, and I, like an example would be one of my own kiddos, right? And say they need one-to-one support. So does each student you send, is it a different cost that participating districts pay per student? Like, how exactly does that break down if an ICSD student is accessing BOCs services at BOCs?
Yeah, so each program, so if you see the guide to services, we'll send you more if you need them. But each program is attached to COSER code. So you might see, you know, professional development is, is in the 505s. And it's, this is how a district can pay into it. So it might be connected to ARWADA. It might be three-year rolling average. And it might be specific to the particular program and the particular student need. So something like, I'll give an example. So for PTEC, gosh. But TST started a PTEC program, was it 10 or 11 years ago now? Eight. It was eight years ago. Perfect. So eight years ago, we said, okay, here's going to be, here is the cost per student to start. And it's going to shift over time because we're trying to build a program. So everybody would buy in and there was a base cost plus the cost per student. And that started to shift once we built up the program. So again, it totally depends on the program. It totally depends on the student. And for students who receive special education services, there's high-cost aid, there's stack, there's, there are things that are specific to the student that the district actually ends up billing through Medicaid. And then, and then receives that money back.
I think you maybe, it's a complicated question, right? Like it's, I get it.
There's a methodology of splitting the bill for every COSER. So the administrative budget is based on ARWADA. So we say that Ithaca is 43% of the budget. So you'll end up paying about 43% of the cost of the administrative budget. When you get into CTE, it's tuition-based. It's how many students did you send times the tuition? The tuition is the same for all, same way with the exceptional ed. The tuition is the same per student. It's just a matter of how many do you send? With garbage, it's based on how many tons we pick up and take to the, to the dump for you. So that's a, that's a, a use charge. The print shop is a use charge. How many pieces of paper did we run through? It's a click charge. So each COSER has its own cost methodology for billing the, to, to charge the bill. So there's ARWADA, there's percent use, there's FTE, there's tuition. There's, and I'm sure there's more of that's those, those are the ones that I can think of. But there is a methodology of everybody that participates in a particular COSER. How are we going to split the bill?
Right. So each program is really different and staffing is different in each program. So the cost of each program is different.
Yep.
Okay.
And it, and the people, the districts that are participating are the only ones that are paying.
I will add to that the money that districts receive back can depend as well. So there are some services that are adable and there are some that are not. Which, you know, I've been in this job for how many days now? I don't know, like 120 maybe. And, and so I'm, I'm still learning all of the, all of the ins and outs of all of the things that are permitted, you know, were permitted to put through a COSER that is, that generates that 43 cents on the dollar back. So things like rubbish pickup that actually can't generate any aid. That's just a flat-out cost and districts never receive anything back on it. Dave was just talking about click charges for printing. That's adable, but the physical paper, because that's not shared, can't be. Right? So there's just a whole slew of fascinating laws that we get to follow to.
Because it's stacked aid. Transportation is not BOCs aid because it's better to have transportation aid.
It's higher. You get more money back.
Does that answer your question?
I, I mean, I think it would take a few more years to answer all my questions. That answers it well enough.
You can always invite us back.
I'll text you.
Well, I think it's, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a good reminder that we're talking about New York State and BOCs is a New York State entity. And since we love using acronyms, right? The Board of Cooperative Educational Services. And so you both are using COSERS, which is a cooperative service program. And the idea being that oftentimes it is much more economically efficient to combine resources to provide programs for folks. And so that's what Ithaca does with our eight other fellow component districts, is use those services. And I'm more talking to our community to make sure folks understand how this operates. And so part of the ICSD budget to support learners within ICSD is to cooperate with other, eight other component districts to give them the services that we need. And that's the total $22 million while we are being asked to vote on the administrative budget of $6 million and, and change. So I think it's important for our community to understand part of that process as well of how we get there. Other states don't operate with BOCs as we do. It's a, you know, we know, for folks who work with other people from other states, know that this is a very New York approach. Well, with that being said, thank you all very much. I'm sure if we have questions, please do send the document you mentioned. I just forgot what it was called.
Guide to services.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, good folks. Good to see everybody again. Absolutely. We will continue on with our agenda, which is an update from the finance committee that happened earlier today at 4:30 PM. We had a finance committee led by Dr. Blalock. And I'll ask Dr. Blalock to give us an update from that meeting.
So this is an update from a meeting, as Dr. Bradwell said, that took place just a couple hours ago. I haven't had time to fully let the information percolate through. So I'm going to, for the benefit of those who weren't there, and many of my colleagues were there, so I'm going to invite them to jump in if I'm misremembering things. But it was a, a finance committee meeting that centered on a visit by Mr. Jay Franklin, who runs the assessment office in Tompkins County. And he had some, to me at least, some unexpected and big news on how assessments are going to be done for the next four years. So forgive me, I'm just going to back what you say a little bit about, just to remind everybody about the finance process. What this board will do in a couple of months is propose a budget that we're going to spend this amount of money. We will then take that budget to the voters. The voters will approve it or not approve it. If the voters approve the budget, then from the budget, federal and state aid is stripped out and other aid. And what's left then is a bill that goes to the residents of this community. And that bill is divided up amongst the residents of this community based on the fair market value of real estate assets they own. Okay? So as a taxpayer, there's sort of two things that could come at you. One is the size of the tax levy, the total bill that we're putting in the community. And that's approved by the community through the vote. And then of that tax levy, your share as a homeowner. Right? Or as a renter through your, through your rent that you're going to bear. Generally, the part of the bill that's attributable to this board and the public vote is modest, meaning in the single digits. We might increase our budget 3% or 5% or 6%. But at least in my knowledge, it's always been sort of 1%, right? Not, not, not.
Single digit.
Single, yeah, sorry, 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 sorry. Single-digit increases. What happened last year though, is that the way that, I think initially our budget was like a 6% increase. But the way that budget increased by 6% was going to be passed on to homeowners changed a lot because of changes in the assessments. Some people saw, saw their real estate assets go up a lot. Other people saw their real estate assets hold steady or even go down. So that caused a double-digit change in many people's bill. Particularly if you were a single-family homeowner, you saw 20, 25, 30% increases in your bill. Nothing to do with the budget that this board proposed and the public voted on. But because the way that bill was divided up, those of you who are winners in the real estate market kind of got hit with a heavier tax bill. So that caused a lot of understandable concern. The volatility of the tax bill is something that people have difficulty preparing for. I think in response to that and response to other factors, the assessment office is going to go a different direction for the next four years. And what that means is that for the next four years, the assessment office is not going to attempt to measure what they call, what it calls market changes. So they're not going to go look at the South Hill neighborhood or the Northeast neighborhood or this neighborhood or that neighborhood and say, well, houses in that neighborhood went up this amount or that amount, and then update everyone's assessment based on market conditions. They're not going to do that at all between now and 2029. So the only change.
Not that it's a final decision, as Jay said, it has to go to the legislators. And he was given an idea due to the new software that they get in place.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. So the, the asterisks on this is that this is what Mr. Franklin, as the director of the office, is proposing and is subject to approval by Tompkins County Legislature. He's proposing a transition to, let's say in short, a better system, which will be online in 2029. So between now and then, he is not planning on overlaying market changes to properties. Now, he will make changes to properties that are based on physical changes. A demolition, a renovation, a new construction, mergers of properties, things like that. But my understanding of what he's saying is that if you own a house in a neighborhood and it's worth assessed today at $300,000 and it doesn't fall down and you don't improve it, for the next four years, it's going to be assessed at $300,000. Even if you sell it for $400,000, that, that the sale is not going to update the price. So unless you renovate it or demolish it or make a physical change to it, between now and 2009, 2029, the assessed value is not going to change. So what that means then, going back to people's tax bill, is taxpayers are still going to be subject to variations in the budget we proposed and the voters approve. But again, that's typically single digits. But unless you renovate or demolish or make a physical change to your home, you're not going to be subject to what is your share of that new budget? You're going to be protected from that until 2029. Now, if I can editorialize on that a little bit, there's good and a bad in that perhaps. The, the good on that is that it gives you predictability. Your bill's not going to change that much because unless, you know, unless this board moves away from single-digit changes in the budget, which I don't think it's going to do, you're probably looking at similar changes in your tax bill. So the predictabilities are good. What's arguably bad about it is the precision. You know, if we think we want to be precise in measuring the value of homes to be equitable and charging people what their homes or their properties are worth, we're not going to see that precision. I mean, even if your own home sells for, you know, $100,000 more, there's not going to be an update. So Dr. Bradwell, I mean, maybe I should stop there. What am I forgetting to say? Is that, is that, is that a fair summary? Do others who were here want to summarize that differently?
The only addition I would say is that Jay Franklin said, without changing significantly assessed values with new properties, for lack of a word, coming online, quote unquote, with abatements that may be ending, that there could be an expectation of the overall tax base. that there could be an expectation of the overall tax base increase of about one to one and a half percent. So with no additional, just with new construction, new development, that we, that the board or the community can anticipate that the completely assessed value of, was it seven point four billion dollars? I may have the number wrong, I apologize, but somewhere seven something billion dollars, that that number itself would increase by about one percent over the next couple of years, that that would probably predictable. But beyond that, you are correct that no significant additions to assessed value as we've been experiencing for a little bit of time. Adam, I thought you were.
No, I was just agreeing and nodding my head and then just thinking that. But then in two thousand twenty-nine, when there's, then there'll be some new data out, and it's possible that people could see increases at that time, but that there'll be some stability until then.
Yeah, and I mean, Dr. Cranwell has asked the question about, you know, the house that goes up two hundred thousand dollars in a hot neighborhood, and it was a good question, and the answer is no.
Right.
It's, the, the assessments are not gonna change until two thousand twenty-nine. I would just though, I wanna, second time tonight, I wanna put a bright line in the sand. Mark your calendar. You heard it here. If I am on this board on July one, two thousand twenty-nine, please do not come and stand here and say, I didn't see a change in my assessment coming. I'm telling you right now, there's probably gonna be a big change in assessments. I don't know what it'll be, but there's gonna be a big change. If, if he holds everything steady for four years, when the clock ticks two thousand twenty-nine, for sure, there's gonna be some big changes. And, you know, he, he can't pause the volatility forever. So, you know, if, if, if you can't take that risk, don't own property in Tompkins County, you know, get rid of it between now and then.
But with one additional caveat, he, he did make mention of the housing bubble bursts. I believe he used your nineteen eighty-eight, where between nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-seven, housing assessments actually decreased in Ethica. What we've experienced since COVID is a significant unsustainable increase in housing prices and housing values. So I say that as to say, there's nothing to say that houses will maintain this current level. They can in fact go down. That is a possibility. Unlikely, but it is a possibility, and we've already experienced it in the past thirty years in our community. But to Dr. Blalock's point, it was very clear that as they are able to, as they are able to transition to this new program, which Jay Franklin seems to be very excited about, to be a much more accurate program and modeling for the staff to be able to assess homes in various ways, that for the time being, they're going to be spending their time populating that new software. And then there will be some changes in two thousand twenty-nine, whatever that may look like. And I would also like to echo, I will not be on this board. And I will put a mark in the sand. So you did hear that, Nicole. That's my spouse. I, we, the community should be prepared for whatever that is, or be paying attention to the market as that takes place. And then lastly, what I'll say is, we know we have some conversations. That was one of the Finance Committee meetings that I absolutely recommend folks go and watch. Board members asked phenomenal questions. Garrick did a great job of facilitating that meeting and giving space, and Jay Franklin gave some pretty clear and precise information about what that looks like moving forward. It'll be essential for our community to know that as the board plans a budget with that particular factor, and not just this year, if that's the factor moving forward for the next couple of years, that'll have a significant impact on the tax levy that the board puts forward as well. So it is, I think we spent about forty-five minutes, maybe fifty minutes on that conversation alone. It's fifty minutes of the community's time that is worthwhile to better understand that assessment process. And he did go through how they assess properties as well, which would be instructive for people to know. And again, not just homeowners. It impacts rent. It impacts a whole host of things. So I, I would, I would recommend that. Any additional comments from board members? So that was part of the update we wanted to make sure folks have, knowing that everyone will be watching that Finance Committee, so we wanted to give an update at the board meeting. And a plug to go watch that Finance Committee. It's rivening television, I'm telling you. Fantastic. Thank you very much, Dr. Blalock. Appreciate it. That will bring us to our last agenda item. There are two policies that are on the agenda. We're gonna ask Dr. Dan Bryman to come down and join us. And this is policy one five zero zero, public use of school facilities. This came up from a number of folks, been having conversations. I know Jill and I have had some conversations. I know Karen and I have had some conversations. Adam and I have had, I'm sure other folks have had conversations together as well. There's a little bit of, not a little bit, a lot of community questions about the use of public facilities. With Dan Bryman's help, we are trying to look at this policy, and my colleague Emily Workman, who's also on the Policy Committee, is not able to be with us this evening. But we are having a conversation about how can we rewrite a policy that is not operating from a lens of pro, being prohibitive, but being from a lens of being welcoming. And that is sort of a, both a shift in language and hopefully a shift in policy and practice. With that being said, there's a lot of nuances, like any policy is. And so we've asked Dr. Bryman to come here for board members. If we get to a point in time where we're okay, this would be for a first reading for a vote, which means it would go back to policy to work out any additional questions. We would not be voting to adopt this policy this evening, no matter what takes place. If it's not ready for a first vote tonight, we still send it back to policy to do some work. And we're anticipating that there would be some questions that were asked to, to Dr. Bryman specifically about some of the more nuances about how we make this happen. So with that, Dan, welcome.
Thanks.
My apologies. Let me say one more thing. I interrupted you as you were talking. I also want to thank you for the amount of work, not just on this policy, but we ask a very, we're asking folks to do more work. Let's, let's just acknowledge that. We're asking a lot of folks to do more work. You're one of those folks we're asking to do more work, and you have spent an awful lot of time looking at the legalities, the insurance, the practices on this policy specifically. So I wanted to acknowledge and honor that work and thank you for the time.
Thanks. Sean, would you like me to summarize a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. So for fifteen hundred, public use of school facilities, we wanted to write this more to welcome groups more to utilize our spaces. So basically, what we're looking at for not-for-profit groups is if you wanna use our space during existing hours where staff is present, that will come at no cost or very min, possibly minimal cost. But if it's outside of contract hours, which is predominantly on our weekends, because our custodians work very late, we will, for not-for-profit groups, we will be charging a fee to cover our costs for having a person there, custodial staffing, and we'll also have to find an employee to work on the weekends as well for not-for-profit groups. We also, I also have a companion policy here, fifteen hundred R, which talks about the process for reserving the space. We've, we have added some more lang, welcoming language about that, you know, we wanna be available for the community for supporting educational activities and serving, serving the public good, of course. But of course, events that don't interfere with educational activities. And then for profits, I know I talked a lot about not-for-profits, but for profits, they can use our space. But because of our requirements, if they do do that, a hundred percent of the fees have to be donated to an educational charity of their choosing. So those are kind of the basics for the first policy. And I can talk a little bit more about the second policy if you want me to as well.
Would it be helpful for board members to hear both the policy as well as the procedure, right? Or is it a regulation for us? This is a regulation, but anyway, the idea being that that's actually how it would get enacted.
That's right.
Would you like to hear both of those simultaneously? Please do.
I know it's really exciting. I'll be really brief, okay? For the, for the, it's, it's the nuts and bolts of the policy. But basically, every organization that uses our space has to use a master library, the ML system. And in that system, they create a login. They have to provide an up-to-date insurance. And then it's sent to our approvers throughout the syst, throughout our system. We have approvers in our athletic department, in our fine arts department. Every school has approver. One of the things, through the Policy Committee, there's been some great feedback about some things we could be a little bit looser on. One of the things was, do we really have to have the fourteen days? So we added some language to say that we can make exceptions on a case-by-case basis. We do this already. We also talked about, we also talked about that even though a group may use, put in a reservation for a space, district staff can till, can still take priority in unexpected situations that have happened with maybe field conditions, where if the field conditions aren't good on sweet field, that maybe the athletic event has to move on to the turf or something like that. So those are the basics. That's really probably as short as I can be about both policies. Happy to answer any questions.
I, I have one. I was, I just was just having trouble coming up with examples, or maybe you could just kind of explain this. Just the one part about the for-profit organizations.
Yeah.
Like, what's an example of a for-profit organization that would wanna use district space to do something, and then they would have to donate all of the fees and proceeds to an educational charity? Like what, I, I was just trying to come up with an example.
It's if they're benefiting off the event.
So they get?
If, it, it, so for profit, let me try to explain this. If a for-profit is using our space, but then they're, they're collecting fees to be on our property, they're then profiting off of the taxpayer dollars. And that is why that legally we're asking for them to make a donation, because you can't profit off of our fields and our, that, maybe that part, I'm sure you understand that part.
Yeah, yeah. But like what, I just in, in historically, what type of organization would come here and then make a profit? And then, I'm just wondering.
I, that's hard, because I don't wanna name, I don't wanna, I have.
Yeah.
I, I think Doc is trying to save me here. We have been, we have.
Looking for.
Soaping.
No, I, I understand. I understand. I don't get in trouble, but.
I think, I think I don't wanna name organizations, but we have certainly, we have certainly talked through, thanks, Doc.
I certainly. I can save you here. I'll give you an example of a not-for-profit organization.
Okay.
That could easily be a for-profit organization. So one of the joys of my family is every summer that there is a three-on-three basketball tournament that takes place in the high school parking lot. That is a not-for-profit organization, but that could easily be a for-profit organization saying, I wanna hold this three-on-three basketball tournament and charge every team a fee to pay me, and therefore I'm then profiting from it. That, that's an example for me that we may not currently face, but could easily face. Or a for-profit theater company that wants to use our black box theater, or, you know, you name it. There's any number of organizations that would like to use district spaces because they're beautiful spaces and they provide the amenities that folks are looking for. I don't think that this is a response to an exact issue. I think it's protecting us, should that ask ever come.
Okay, and that, and that they couldn't profit from.
Does that answer your question, Adam?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I think in a generic, maybe a generic answer for me would be like, maybe an individual who is profiting off of their expertise using our, it's very generic, through coaching or something, and then just collecting a fee for that. That would, that might be an example. I'm not saying that has happened.
No, that's a good.
Of course, but that would be one example.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions board members may have?
Comment.
Yeah, please.
Dan, again, thank you for your work on all of this. I, I don't envy you having to do the work, but um.
That's okay.
I, I have no problem with what you've got at this point as far as groups. I continue to struggle with how we as a district can be more welcoming to individual community members who wanna play tennis on a Sunday morning, who wanna play pickleball on a Saturday afternoon, who wanna run on the track at a time when school is not in session. Because I think most of us grew up with that kind of facility available to us in our communities, and it just felt right. And I don't, I don't know how we get around the liability issue, but I hope we can continue to look at that as a way of opening at least those facilities, the outdoor facilities, during times when we're not using them in a way where we can continue to protect the facilities against misuse and perhaps also protect the people who want to use the facilities. By, I, I don't, again, I don't know the particulars, but I'm saddened that people who are walking by and see an unused tennis court during a time when school is not in session don't have the opportunity to use it.
I have worked with some of those, not to name which groups I'm working with, but obviously, we're not gonna play tennis at this moment in February. But we are, we are, I mean, maybe we would, who knows? But.
I challenge you, Dan.
No, we won't. We won't. But I am working with some of those groups to figure out some solutions we can come up with to have a better, better use, not to, not to get, not to get into the specifics.
That would allow individuals? See, that's the problem.
We have, with the, with the tennis, I do believe we have a plan to have it more open when the weather gets better.
Great. As long as this, approving this policy doesn't preclude looking at more creative ways to use.
I've met with representatives from the tennis community.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and then in terms of the track, that is something we'll be working on as well.
If I may follow up with Jill's question, so I'm not, I have not been to a policy meeting. I know you've talked about it, so I don't mean to be redundant.
Sure.
But I, I'm just, I mean, I've used the track at Lansing, so I'm just confused and would like to know why it's such a difficult process when other districts allow use of their facilities.
I think our facility, and this has come up in some of the other meetings, our, our, the track facility has a unique fuel site behind the stadium that, that we have to figure out how to, we have to think about how to secure and some vehicles. But it has been, that's one thing for why not we haven't just left our facilities completely open on the weekends when they're, we don't have any staff members. But those are some things we'll have to, have to figure out. Not, I, I don't believe, you know, a lot of our track facilities have that same maintenance area in the back, okay? But I do think we can come up with some compromises. And it would probably be easier for us to think about open times when our staff are here during the weekdays. When we don't have to, when we don't have to figure out or, or identify staff who wanna work as a volunteer on a weekend. But instead, building on the staffing levels we have Monday through Friday and thinking about times that our community can use the track during, during the work week, if that makes sense.
Can I push a little bit, though?
Sure, sure.
I mean, it feels like this is so overly complicated.
Yeah.
And I wonder about like fencing and a lock.
Yeah.
Just because, I mean, with the amount of money that our community members pay in taxes, not being able to go for a run on the track or play tennis or whatever seems absolutely ridiculous. And I feel like we should be bending over to, to making this more accessible for people.
Sure, agree. And if I can, because I think I mentioned some things at our Policy Committee meeting earlier on, having the fifteen-year look at this, because fifteen years ago, these spaces were wide open, similar to what you're describing in another community. And things have changed. Things have evolved. We also had front doors open in most of our buildings at the time, and at the high school, a hundred and twenty of them were open at the time. Things have changed. And I got, I need to remind everyone in the room and who's watching that the tennis court, the track, the football field, there are learning spaces that primarily use a physical education. And just like other learning spaces in our school district, it's our responsibility to make sure they're secure. And I have been awakened in the middle of the night, and someone has stolen a piece of equipment from the track. I have been awakened in the middle of the night when someone has done something significantly inappropriate on the tennis court. And if a young person were to see it on a Monday morning, it would have been traumatic. I have been here while things have happened during the school day, where folks thought that that space was open, like what you're describing, and it became harmful to young people that I serve. So yes, I, I wear that burden that we have to secure the space first. And that will, that requires us to make sure there's staff and there's coverage and yeah. And there are liabilities. I've been here when we've received notice of claims and have been shamed on Facebook because someone fell on the tennis court on a weekend and hurt their ankle. And the school district is now liable for, at the time, I think that notice of claim looked like two million dollars. And the school district is now liable for, at the time, I think that notice of claim looked like two million dollars. So this issue is complex. Um, and that's why when you say community, the community and communication goes both ways. I would be asking our community to help us. And these spaces are also right next to a state highway that has, and you know, I'll remind folks, I've been here long enough to know that there was a SWAT incident that happened on that state highway right next to that tennis court that could have impacted adults and young people. And had it not been secured, there would have been an issue. So not to be the downer here, this thing is complex. And we're trying to be as accessible and as inclusive as we can, um, next to a major highway at a time where there are all kinds of inappropriate things and dangerous things that happen in learning spaces. So this policy is complex.
I think that's how we, we got here, right? Um, I, um, am much more aligned with Jill. This is part of the conversation we had, talking with individuals, wanting folks to be able to have access to it. At the same point in time, as a school board, we bear significant fiduciary responsibility primarily against some of those liabilities. Uh, we've had our football fields, uh, not just torn up before. Uh, we've had folks throw rocks at the, uh, the scoreboard and, and break pieces of it. So the goal is it not, is not to swing from one extreme to the other. Um, and Erin, I appreciate when you say it seems overly complicated. I think we all agree. It, it is overly complicated for a public space. And at the same point in time, I had to say to somebody else, uh, we don't allow folks just to walk into our schools, which is also taxpayer-funded. Folks pay a lot of money to have nice elementary schools and we don't say you can come in whenever you want. So it's not, I wish it were simpler. I, I honestly do. I wish we had just, hey, let's make this happen. Um, I like Jill's approach. Let's not, let's not write a policy that precludes us from being creative and thinking about how to get around some of these.
Yeah.
Um, I think there are some solutions. Dan is proposing some and has been exploring them.
Yes.
Talking with our legal counsel. I think what I want the community to realize is that the reason why we're even revisiting this is to try to find that compromise to say, we recognize that folks want use to it and we want to make that access possible. And we want to do it in a way that protects the district from liability and protects the spaces and protects our students and our staff. And so I, I wish it were, I wish it was a more simple solution. And maybe it is. And I will say to people, say them all the time, well, um, school districts around us all open their spaces. And I say, no, some school districts do that around spaces. There are plenty of school districts that also lock down their spaces more so than even we do. So we're not, we're right in the middle. Doesn't mean that we're doing the right thing. I just want folks to know that we're right in the middle of what you'll find across the state for a use of a public school district spaces. How we find those solutions, um, that's why I was saying, thanking Dan, who's been on the phone, talking with other folks, talking with lawyers, talking with the school districts, say, how can we make this much more accessible? Um, and I agree, uh, I want to see this tennis match between Jill and Dan.
Ready.
In particular. Uh, we don't take questions from them.
I, I'll just say Dan, Susquehanna Valley Varsity Tennis, nineteen sixty-nine through seventy-one. So you're quaking in your boots, I can tell.
Dan, all I'm going to say is Jill was this far away from taking the microphone out of its stand and just dropping it. That, that was quite close. But to the community, so maybe what we'll do is we'll hold on to any first vote because we're not, we're, we're still working through this.
Yeah.
We are hearing our board say that we want to try to find as much, as much accessibility as possible.
Yeah.
We'll continue to work on that. We'll come up with some more solutions and bring it back.
Sure.
To the board to then sort of vote on after we continue to do some more creative thinking. And we will ask our community, including students, to give us some suggestions about how to do that moving forward as well. So please do email me and we'll, we'll take a look at what that can, what can, that can happen.
Sounds great.
Does that work, board colleagues?
Mm-hmm.
Fantastic. There are no other agenda items? Uh, upcoming, what do you mean discussion items?
Wait, I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Comment. At our, um, finance committee right before this, we had the budget presentation on transportation. And at that time, we were informed that, um, a bus driver that we had had passed away.
Thank you.
Due to an illness. And when I heard the name, I had to go and verify if it was the correct name and it truly was. This is a bus driver, I won't say the name out publicly, but this is a bus driver who has been with the district for over ten years. This was a bus driver for both of my children that my husband and I got to know this bus driver. Um, this bus driver would greet us when we were at Wagnons. During COVID, this bus driver was one of those individuals that drove around to make sure children got what they needed and families got what they needed. So I just want to share my deepest condolences to the family of this driver and to the transportation department for the loss, because it truly was a loss. When last year, when there was a lot of discussion about, um, student-facing staff, every staff member in this district is a student-facing staff member. Bus drivers, custodial staff, cafeteria staff. And, and this bus driver looked out for my children when they came off the bus. And I truly appreciated this individual for all they did. And I am at a loss and I will definitely share with my children of the loss because they continued to talk about this individual after they had this person in middle school. And it is definitely a loss for our district. So my condolences to the family and to the transportation department too.
Yes, thank you, Karen. We echo those sentiments. And we will bring our meeting to a close for tonight. We'll see you all soon.